Get started with the 350 work, excuse me, 350 work session. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Lind.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Walper.
Here.
Mr. Hurt.
Motion for the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed, motion carries. We're going to revisit the animal control ordinance that Sandy Greco presented to us. When was it? A while ago.
Four weeks ago.
Four weeks ago, I think about, and we have made some revisions, and I think you've noted those, Sandy. I don't know, did you pass some stuff out, or are you?
Does everybody have their copies?
No, I don't. Of the new one?
With the blue lettering?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just.
Yep.
I'm maybe the only one.
Blue and white?
I think, I think we all got it in the.
If you have extras, I'll put one for the.
It was in your packet.
What's that?
I just had to phone. Make sure we have one.
Okay. I was hoping that we would have more folks here from, that didn't get a chance to speak at the last meeting, but maybe the snow kept them away, I'm not sure. But we're going to go ahead and get started with Sandy kind of picking up with the ordinance, and particularly with the revision. So Sandy, why don't you go ahead and start us, please?
Okay. A second draft of the city's revised animal and dangerous animal ordinance has been completed. We seriously took under consideration comments and suggestions of Mike Goings that was here the last time, and Randy Herit, along with others that have contacted us. I'd just like to make another note that Maria and I met with Jeff Olson, the police chief in Cedar Falls, last Thursday regarding animal control services. I am working on a cost for our services. I plan on meeting soon with Jeff to negotiate, and upon that, I will bring forward an agreement to Mayor Clark and the council if Cedar Falls agrees to discontinue their services with the Cedarland Humane Society. I would also like to emphasize again that our goal here is to educate and help make pet owners responsible in the control and caring of their animals. Okay, we made the changes from the last draft. Took into consideration a lot of information, but kind of narrowed it down. Looking at enforcement, we did change the seven days to five days.
What, where is that at?
That is five dash one dash thirteen.
Page seven.
B.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay. We changed the seven days to five days, which is in our other part of our holding period. So if the owner does not come forward after they've been notified, the animal becomes a property of City Animal Control Services after five days. And then we go to five dash one dash fourteen, under definitions. Okay, hobby kennel was deleted, and this was deleted because Chris states that this is a definition based on one that used to be in the Iowa Code until it was taken out about 1988. Dogs and cats are the only animals covered by this definition under our ordinance, so evidently, we didn't know about it and didn't put it back into, or take it out of our ordinance way back when. This will also give us a little more control over hobby kennels where people can breed. If you go to five dash one A dash two, which is licenses requires, under D, one, we have license fees, and this, we're asking again that we keep the altered cats and dogs licenses at $5, and after March 31st, go up to $10. If they are paid by March 31st, or within 90 days after the date on which any dog or cat that is not licensed first becomes subject to licensure under subsection B above. That kind of means that if someone has a dog or cat that's not six months old yet, that after they reach that six months of age, or anything like that, that they have 90 days to come in and get their license. Because that, or if they move into town, you know, from out of town, it just gives them a 90-day break period. Unaltered cats and dogs, we'd like to increase to $25 per year, and they will double to 50 after March 31st. Okay, if we go to noisy, noisy or and annoying animals, we received a question on if we could use video or pictures or from cell phones.
Give us where that's at, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. That is five dash one dash 10.
Okay, there was, there were some.
Changes on 12.
Yeah, you had some changes on five, one A dash six, and.
Okay, I'll, I'll.
You're coming back to those?
Yeah.
Okay, well, tell us where you're going.
Okay.
Okay.
I kind of got a little mixed up. Five dash one dash 10.
Okay.
That would be on page five.
On page what?
Five.
Okay.
A question came up whether we could use videos or cell phones instead of getting three signatures from owners. Could we? Possibly, that's, that decision would still have to come down from the courts. But people have to understand that their phone could be held as evidence, so they would have to turn their phone over to the courts, why this is all being done, so they could lose their cellphone for maybe three to four weeks, why it's, why it's on there. We will still be requiring the three signatures until we would get an order from court that they would allow us to do that.
And, I'm sorry, but would you explain again, for those that might not have heard it, why we're doing the three signatures, Sandy? Because that is a bone of contention a lot.
Right. And that also came down from the court system quite a few years ago, that we would have a problem with neighbor versus neighbor, and if we require three signatures, people are more serious, they know they have to appear in court, it's a mustappear ticket, and people are more, we're not running back and forth to this house all the time, that it's a serious, what do we call it?
So was that a suggestion from the court, or a directive from the court?
It was a directive from the court.
Directive from the court.
Because we've had cases where it's he against she, or neighbor against neighbor in court, and there's no evidence there.
Thank you.
Okay, now if we go to five dash one A dash six. Which is page 12. Okay, in at large, which is A, we've added, for purposes of determining the civil penalty applicable to subsequent municipal infraction offenses, any violation of this subsection that occurs after the first offense is a subsequent offense, which means basically that after a year, we're not going back to the first offense again. If it's the same person, you know, they've been cited once, it will go up to the second. So it will keep increasing the fines will. Okay, under E of the same section, which is page 13, this is before where we had, we're trying to control backyard breeding, but we had in there that it had to be a commercial breeder, you had to be registered with the AKC or whatever. We worked on this and changed it. We have included cats, where before we did not have cats in it, to have, if a person does have a litter, they need to come and register with Animal Control. There will be a $50 fee to register these animals, these puppies or kittens. If they do not, we have the right to go in and take the litter and the mother also and cite them. This would give, say for example, an owner that has maybe a hunting dog, a lab that would like to breed them, or, you know, alls they need to do is come down and register after the litter is, is there. So that makes it a little more open, but still, it gives us some control. Okay, if we go to five dash one A dash nine, which is page 14. We have each dog, yeah, each dog apprehended after being found at large, and each dog confined pursuant to section five dash one dash nine B, which is animals biting persons under confinement, shall be assigned a registration number by Animal Control. We removed prior to being released to its owner or caretaker, and we've added in, if a registration number has not previously been affixed to the dog by permanent microchip, implant, tattoo, or some other permanent means, then before the dog is released to its owner or caregiver, the registration number shall be affixed. If, if the dog already has an identification or a microchip or whatever, we will take that information and use that, we will not re-microchip a dog. Okay, if we go to C under 15, which is spay and neuter, alls we did to that was we added cat in there, where we didn't have cat before, and we changed the dog to animal, so it will include cats and dogs. Okay, if we go to Article B, which is page 15, five dash one B dash one, under definitions, we go to the potentially dangerous dogs, that's the one we really did quite a bit of work on. We kind of combined everything and made it as any dog with a tendency or disposition to bite or attack unprovoked, to otherwise endanger the safety of humans or other domestic animals, or that chases or approaches a person or other domestic animal without provocation while off its owner's or caretaker's property in a menacing fashioning or apparent attack, if the owner of such dog is convicted or pleads guilty not context or equivalent to a violation of five dash one A dash six B based on fear of attack or injury. We removed any dog found at large more than twice, or any dog found at large if the owner or caretaker thereof has been cited by Animal Control for any three, any reason, three or more times over any 12-month period. Just because a dog is out loose doesn't mean it's potentially dangerous. So we've kind of taken that out. The people are being fined anyway, and they will have to follow, you know, they'll have to spay and neuter and all that anyway, so it's just not being quite as tough, because some dogs are gentle and they escape. Five dash one B dash four, which is on page 19, we just added, under prohibitions on possession of animals on A, persons convicted under state law, animal contest events, we've added in, any person who has been convicted of or has pled guilty, no contest or the equivalent to an offense under Iowa Code 717D2, shall be prohibited from owning, keeping, sheltering, or harboring within city limits any animal of the same type, dog, rooster, whatever they were found guilty of, involved in or at issue in such offense. Violation of this subsection shall constitute a misdemeanor and be punishable by a fine of not less than $500, or constitute a municipal infraction. We just felt it was pretty important to put that in there.
Question?
Ms. Cole.
Sandy, 717D point two is dogfighting, right? Or cockfighting, or whatever?
I believe so, yes. Thank you. Okay, if we go to five dash one B dash six, which is guard dogs, which is page 22. We've, we've kind of went through that, too, quite a bit, and read it over and read it over and worked with it, and we've added to the section that a limit of one guard dog is permitted for each residential premises, and two guard dogs for non-residential premises. That way, they have to be registered, too, and we have, we know where these dogs are, and there should only be one in a household. If we go to five dash one B dash seven, registration of regulated dogs, that kind of goes back to the other definition, too, where we are adding in an applicant who has previously been convicted of, or has pled guilty, no contest, or the equivalent to an offense under Iowa Code 717D dash two, sorry. And then if we go to page, it's 24, under K, we had obedience training in there for potentially dangerous dogs and dogs. We have taken that out, mainly because we, as a city, don't want to designate who you should go to for obedience training, because there are a number of dog trainers out there, and it should be, if you decide to do this, and under your discretion. We can suggest it, but we don't feel like we should make that happen. Our last one is five dash one B dash 12, under penalties, which is on the last page. And that one, we just basically added in municipal infraction on that. I would like to say that this is just a reminder, this is a draft. We are welcome to any suggestions or changes. We will go back over this again. And again, our goal is to make Waterloo safer and hold pet owners accountable, is not to destroy all dangerous and vicious dogs, however they cannot be transferred or moved from Waterloo to another city, county, or town as potentially dangerous dogs can. But it's our goal to just make Waterloo a safer place.
Thanks, Sandy. Council, do you have any questions? Any council members for Sandy at this time, Steve?
Just real quickly, Sandy, on that, that last comment, specifically about vicious dogs, you said vicious dogs, we don't want to destroy them, but we also don't want to move them out of the county.
They can't be moved, but there, there is a possibility that under circumstances, vicious or dangerous dogs can be saved.
But it, but if you're, so you're not going, let them go out of the county, and we're not going to destroy them, so who's going to, who's going to rehabilitate them?
That would be a rescue, if they, if they can. You know, if they can, then once that dog is, say, just say passes all tests, the rescue will sign off on it, which means they come back to the city of Waterloo and they take all responsibility and liability.
Okay. I've got, I've got a couple other questions here.
Okay, go ahead, Sandy.
On page nine, so I just want to make sure I understood you correctly, so that hobby kennel thing, that's just something that's, we don't need to worry about that, we don't need to talk about it, that's just, I apologize, completely removed. On page 11, the $25 for non-neutered, that's what it is today, so that's no change?
No, right now, today, it's 10, and then it doubles to 20, and we are asking for 25 and doubling to 50. We're trying to encourage people to spay and neuter their animals.
Okay. What are we, what are we going to do with that money?
That goes into our revenues, which goes back into Animal Control.
On item 12, or page 12, I'm sorry. What, what does that say, again, that, you were saying something about 12 months there, if after 12 months, the person hasn't been cited, then basically they start fresh, or start over, is that what it is?
No, they do not start over.
Oh, so it is a continuation?
Chris may be able to, it, it's kind of legal language, but I'm, I'm sure that's what it is, basically.
Chris Swenland, City Attorney's Office. That's exactly right. Any offense after the first offense is going to be deemed a second offense, subject to the higher penalties.
So it used to clear at 12 months and start over?
No, it will not start over. Once you hit that threshold, you are forever in a second offense status.
The, I don't understand it, so there is a change, or there's not a change?
There is a change.
Because it used to, it used to clear at 12 months, or no?
No, I guess it didn't, did it, Sandy?
Yes.
I think.
Yeah, it did. After a year, then it will go back to, like, the first offense again.
Well, that must be an informal interpretation, because I'm not sure it was written in that way, but in any case, we've clarified now that it's going to be a continuing matter.
Got you. Okay, all right. On page 13, the $50 fee, so if I have a, if my dog has a litter of pups, so I'm going to pay $50 that today I wouldn't.
Right.
And, and the purpose of that $50 is?
Basically, to help us control backyard breeding.
Okay.
Because if people don't come and register after the puppies or kittens are born, and we find out about it, we have the right to go in and take the mother and the, and the litter, and then fine them for that.
I'm assuming also, though, follow-up, Steve and Sandy, I mean, there surely will be some people who just don't know about that.
Exactly.
So we'll give them the opportunity then to, to pay the $50 and, and.
Right. Oh, yeah.
I mean, we're, we're going to work with them, it's not, oh, give us your dogs or pets.
Right, no, 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 no.
It's, we will work with those.
Because this, this is, if this is approved, this is going to take a while to get out there.
And again, that $50 just goes into the budget?
Yes.
I mean, it doesn't, we don't have that specifically earmarked for something, that's just going to go into the budget. Okay.
Can I expand on that question?
Sure.
Over there?
Yeah.
Is that $50 for each dog, or $50 for each litter?
No, it would be the litter.
And what if the, the female hasn't been registered? Is that another $50 to register that female on top of that?
You mean if it doesn't have a license?
Doesn't have a license, no.
If it's past March 31st.
Yeah. Okay.
Can I pick back up again?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. On page 17, potentially dangerous dog, is, and I'm, I guess I'm looking at Chris on this, that item A, any dog with a tendency or disposition, is that the way, that's the way it's written today, and is that, number one, I guess that's a question, that's the way it's written today? That tendency or disposition, because we don't show that we're making a change to that. On page 17, under potentially dangerous dog, the very first item there.
I'll step forward and offer a stumbling response to you, Steve.
Okay.
I don't have what the current definition is in front of me. I do believe, however, that, that is one of the changes, and this was borrowed by looking at ordinances from other jurisdictions. If we're setting a, kind of a lower threshold of regulation, then we want to be on the alert for dogs which seem like they have the potential to be higher risk. What we have done now, though, since the prior work session, is the additional language that's underlined there, which requires not just that someone have a sense about a dog being potentially dangerous, but that, in fact, there's been a citation under ordinance section five dash one A six, paragraph B, on which they've been convicted or have pled guilty, no contest, or something of that nature. So there's a more objective standard to it now.
Okay, and I guess that was really the point of my question, Chris, is, again, going up to A, the, the paragraph above that where it says a tendency or disposition, and from a, from a legal standpoint, tendency or disposition, is that something you can prove, or is that something?
Well, again, it's, it's all tied down to the citation under five, one A six.
Okay.
If, if there's enough evidence to convict them in court, or if there's enough evidence that they say, yeah, I'll plead guilty, or no contest, then it's good enough to stick.
Okay, all right. Thanks. Sandy, on page 20, 24, the obedience training, I think you said you were going to delete that, so, so that's no longer an option? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
What we would do is suggest it.
Okay, but it's not a.
But it's, it's not going to be in ordinance, no.
And then finally, going back, I guess, a little bit to David's question, there's not a way today, and part of this is not somehow other to work with the veterinarians to, and I hate to use the word force, but I think there's a, a lot of good, God-fearing people that just don't register their dogs, because they never have, and we've never made an issue out of it, and I think it's been said, 70 or 80% of the animals in town aren't registered, which I think is just, that's crazy. What we might be able to do to make it more of a requirement, expectation, ordinance, you know, you need to do that, and, and work with the vets to find out who are the dog and cat owners, I mean, is that option, or is that not really an option?
That's like, um, medical information for, almost like a person, they won't give that out.
Steve, I'll just note that my office did, it's probably been two, maybe three years ago now, we did contact every vet in the Cedar Valley, and sent them a flyer of what our regulations were, gave them a poster to put up at their location, so we have tried to kind of do some outreach to the vet clinics, to make sure that they're informed of what our requirements are, to pass it on to their clients, so.
Okay.
We have tried to do some outreach, and.
But legally, there's nothing we can do.
Well, I'm not the attorney, I don't know if legally there is, but that was our first step anyways. I mean, we, I don't know if we can do any enforcement type thing with the vets, but we have notified all of them and given them copies of our regulations.
All right, thank you.
We used to, years ago, take letters in to the vets and ask them to hand them out, when we had Animal Control years ago, when, when people come in, you know, and they get their rabies or shots or whatever, we asked them if they would pass out one of our letters, too, so, to notify their clients, so, and they did back then. I'm not sure, we could probably try that again.
Well, and it seems like, you know, the people we're trying to impact here are probably not the ones that are going to take a suggestion, so that's why I was trying to, you know, get a little more inhibitive way or something, so, all right, thank you.
And, and that's, and I see Maria's there, the use of tranquilizer guns, and we'd had a brief conversation, and you'd said that there were, you did, I, I don't think the Animal Control even has tranquilizer guns, and.
We don't, we don't at this time, no.
But we were going to have it in the ordinance, and I was hoping that, that you, Maria, or whoever, could address how you plan to, to make use of this section of the ordinance in the future, either with training and/or obtaining the equipment to use that, because I, I really do think there's a place for that, so.
Yeah, I, I, Maria needs to talk on this, I mean, I can explain it, but she's out on the street, she can explain it a little better than I can.
The section for the tranquilizer is basically like a tool. Problem with tranquilizer guns is all animals are different. You cannot just take a tranquilizer gun out onto the city street, you actually have to have these animals in a confined area, such as a fenced-in yard. enclosed building. I would not recommend shooting a dart out in, in an enclosed building, but it has been done for the simple fact that you run the risk of an animal taking off. And tranquilizers can ultimately affect an animal in several different ways. And if an animal drops and you're unable to find it, I personally don't want to be responsible for accidentally somebody's dog dying because we can't get to it. And it has been known, but in the past, in all the years I worked for animal control, that there had been times that animals had been over-tranked with a tranquil gun, and tranquil guns were not utilized properly. However, we have used them in certain areas, but like I said, those are in confined areas, and it's not a common thing that we use. Could we obtain one? Yes. In dire emergencies, could we use one? Yes. But I prefer not to.
But, but there could be a provision in there to do both of those.
There could be a provision in there to do both of those, utilize it as a tool and to do the proper training on it. But here again, it's not just something that you can take out into the animal control vehicle and just target a dog out on the city street. You actually have to know what you're doing, and you have to have it in a confined area. And unfortunately, there's so many unfenced-in yards in here, in, in the city, and it's really hard to get an animal confined sometimes.
Well, I, I'm, I know that you're aware that there are people, especially over in the San Souci area, that are very concerned in that general vicinity there about, especially pit bulls being loose. And to me, isn't that a, a further assurance to them that there is this means that can be used to capture those dogs that they are definitely afraid of?
It is an assurance, but again, we have to utilize that particular equipment properly. And up in Chautauqua Park, those areas, those backyards are very, very small, and a lot of people do not have fenced-in yards. And all of the pit bull instances that have happened up there, the dogs are gone from almost every single one of those addresses that they have been having issues with. And we did end up trapping and catching the dog that was dragging the chain and running back and forth across from San Souci back to Chautauqua Park.
Thanks.
Anything further from counsel? David?
So as this ordinance is written, what would have happened, like we had last summer, with the three dogs attacking that woman? What would have been the options for those dogs under this ordinance as proposed?
Pretty much the same as we did.
And what happened to those dogs? Did they go back to the owner?
No. Oh, no. The owner was cited for all three. Two of them did have identification, that he did have two of them licensed. The other one, he did not. But with investigation and neighbors coming forward, the other pit was his too, the one that got shot. So they were put down.
Okay. And he was fined?
We did have to hold them. You know, you have to hold them for 10 days because they bit, but after that, yes.
And what was the fine for him?
He was, what, $100? Like $1,200 he was cited.
Okay.
Because we just don't do fear of attack. I mean, we get them with whatever we can.
So that's what occurred before this ordinance? So how does this strengthen our position in a case like that? Or does it?
It'll let us do the same thing we did, you know? It'll give us the option to, well, it won't go back.
Okay, it won't go back. But I thought one of the original reasons for looking at this in the first place was to provide more of a tool to deal with this type of situation.
Well, legally, we're, we're kind of stuck. I mean, you can, you can only do so much when a dog attacks. You, you get the dog, you confine it, you cite the people, and they, they don't get the dog back, you know, when it gets euthanized. So there's, there's only so much we can do, and that's why we have a potentially dangerous dog now. So if, if we have, if we know that it is potential, at least we know that it's up in that area, you know, that, that we can keep an eye on that when we're in that area. It's just, your hands are kind of tied when it comes to an attack because...
Well, but, but on the same hand, I mean, what more can you do besides cite the people and put the dog down? I mean, that's kind of the...
Well, I think when we first started this, we weren't sure what happened to those dogs. So if that's what happened, then great.
And...
It's what should have happened.
Yeah.
Civil libertarians don't allow us to execute on the spot, which is what I think should have happened to those three dogs.
Well, to one of them, it did.
It did.
Yeah.
And it was done by a police officer.
Mr. Schmidt?
Well, and I think going back to Councilman Jones' question again, so that, I think the key to this is the owner. You know, that's good those dogs are taken care of, but, so that owner got a $1,250 fine, anything, something like that. But that owner, then I assume is prohibited from owning a dog again in Waterloo?
In the old ordinance, no.
After...
In this one, yes.
Okay.
He can still own a dog because this hasn't passed.
Because what?
He can still own a dog today because this isn't enforced.
That's correct.
In fact, he did. I mean, they had a fire, and we went back there and they had... Waterloo Fire Rescue rescued that pit bull.
They did.
Mr. Schmidt, you had further comments or...
No, no, thank you.
Anyone else in council right now? Very good. Thank you, Sandy. What I'd like to do now is open it up to the audience. We had several people here the last time that wanted to speak, but we ran out of time. So I definitely want to get to those folks that didn't get an opportunity to speak last time, to have the microphone first, if you so choose.
I would, I would like to say one thing, though. If... We would like to get sections of this passed, just like everyone, you know? But if there's something that you think should be changed, if you would give us some guidance as to what, what you would like to see different, we can go back to the table and work on that. So we would like to get this really set, you know, before, we don't want to tweak it once it's been accepted.
Thanks, Sandy.
So, Ms. Smith, so Sandy, I'm sorry. Would you like us to send you our suggestions just directly to you?
I would, yes.
Okay. All right. And is there... Okay, all right, we'll just send suggestions to you.
Suggestions, comments, anything, you know? I mean, we take everything serious and, and...
Well, what, I guess one other question, again, this might be more for Chris. In the past, I've heard people talk about how, you know, a, a trained dog, vicious trained dog, is just like a loaded gun. And is, I mean, is the most we can do for, again, the owners, the most we can do is find them? Can we not go much beyond that as far as prison time? Like if somebody were carrying a loaded gun and, and got into trouble?
Well, there's nothing that the city can do under state law to imprison someone. So I guess maybe talk to your state legislators and see if you can do something at the state level. But we can find, we can take animals away. Those are in our toolkit and available to us, but not much beyond that.
Thanks. The microphone's open for anyone, ladies, if any of you would like to address the mayor or council. Just give us your name and address, please.
I'm Donna Penny with 1524 West Forest Street here in Waterloo. And I'm also co-director of Cedar Valley Pit Bull Rescue here in Waterloo. And I'd like to say that I think that a lot of these changes in the ordinances are really good. We've been working around animal control, and they've been really going out there and holding a lot of these owners accountable. And that's what needs to be done because it wasn't done in the past. Maria has been working very hard, and so has the AC officers, and we're really proud of how well they do. They're going out there and finding the owners and holding them accountable, which needs to be done. And I also believe that when they do come through, they need to be spayed and neutered so we can keep down on this population of the pit bulls or any dog out there because we see so many of them come through. We really also need to work hard on cutting back on these backyard breeders because this is where a lot of the problems also come from because they are not being kept as family dogs like you and I would have our pets. You know, we normally spay or neuter and take care of it at that. I really am supportive of this ordinance, and I'm supportive of animal control and what they're doing. And we need to really work on, keep pushing through this to help hold the owners accountable.
Thanks, Donna. Appreciate it. Thanks for all your help, too. Is there anyone else? Randy?
Randy here, 511 Highland, or, excuse me, 111 Highland. I want to apologize first. I left my ears at home, so if I say something somebody's already talked about, I apologize. Just two, I'm only going to keep this to two short comments. First, a really good thing was this, on page 17, under potentially dangerous dog, item C, where that has been deleted now, I believe. And I think that's a, a good thing to have done that. The other thing I wanted to mention is one which I'm, I'm guessing there's probably some debate about, and that is on page seven, under enforcement, where it says in part, "Any officer is empowered to enter upon any premise upon which a dog, cat, or other animal is kept or harbored and demand proof by the owner or caretaker of such a dog, cat, or other animal that the animal has licensed and has had the proper rabies vaccination tag." This would seem immediately be in violation of amendment, Fourth Amendment. Certainly, they should, if there's a need, they have to enter, but it would seem like they would have to do it only with warrant. If you can see something from line of sight in somebody's backyard, that's a little different. But the way I read this, what we're talking about is an animal inside somebody's house. And I would think the Fourth Amendment would apply then.
Chris, can you, can you address that?
Well, I can address it to an extent. I'm not an expert in this area, but there, first of all, I'll point out there's been no change at all to this section. Okay? This has been in the, on the books for animal control regulation in the city for some many number of years.
Yes.
Some of the rules that you are stating are basically correct, that there needs to be probable cause to enter a premises or see something within a line of sight. I guess the city, to my knowledge, hasn't had an issue with, with this as of yet. Given the comments of our animal control people, I don't expect that the city is going to have an issue because they're not taking the passage of this ordinance as free license to start going Rambo on enforcement. So, while I understand your concern, I think based on the history of the ordinance, as well as the attitude of those who enforce it, that your concerns are probably more theoretical in nature than likely to be practically displayed.
Sure. As long as you're up, this thing about what more restrictive penalties on some of these people who are not responsible, I think a lot of us would like to see that. Am I wrong? That state law does provide Class D felonies for certain people under certain conditions with animals that are known to be dangerous, trained to be dangerous, bred to be dangerous, do face both fines and jail time.
Well, I can't answer that directly because that would be a matter of state law. And all I'm tasked with here is providing an ordinance that can be enforced as a local entity. And to my knowledge, local animal control would not have power to do some of the things that you might be referring to.
That would have, if that were to occur, there would have to be some kind of link, connection made probably with county attorney and then into state, wouldn't it?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Thank you for your earlier comments, too. We did, as you can see, Randy, can you, can you hear me, Randy?
Yes.
Thanks for your other comments. I mean, we did take a look at those, and we did adopt some of them, so they were good comments. But council, I would like very much to, is there anyone else who would like to have any comments? I would like very much to bring this to, to council for action. I would like to do it in a week unless there's consensus that maybe we should take a couple of weeks just to sort through any suggestions that might be made. Is there, yes, Ms. Cole?
We've had six months to sort through everything. At one time, it was going on the October 7th agenda, and then there, then that pesky election got in the way. And it would, I honestly feel that we did our citizens a disservice by not passing this before the election. And now I'm already getting phone calls from my pit bull ladies who are worried about what this council's going to do to keep them safe. I mean, the weather's warming up already, so we've got to do it. No piece of legislation is ever perfect. There are amendments to the United States Constitution because they didn't get it all right the first time. So this is like the property maintenance code and other major pieces of city code. We've, we pass them, we give our people the tools to enforce them, and when something comes up, if we have to fix it, we do. Nothing's perfect.
Would I hear any major objection to putting this on next Monday? That's what I would like to do. And that'll give us a week to make any efforts. If you have suggestions, we can work that in if they are applicable and amiable. So this will be on next Monday's council meeting for a vote. And this will be a good time to remind you for the first time that next Monday's council meeting will not be in this chamber. It will be at the Arts Center, in the theater, in the Arts Center. Very good.
Motion to adjourn?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Agreed? Return. Thank you all very much. Return. Thank you all very much. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterloo City Council on this Monday, February seventeenth. Before we get started, there were some old agendas that had been put in the box up here this evening, so I want to make sure you guys have the right agenda. Check the date on it, and if it's not the right date, there are some new ones the clerk just brought up. So, if you're trying to follow along with the wrong agenda, you're going to be more confused than we are up here even. So, Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Cole, here. Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Lind?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here. Very good. Thank you, ma'am. If you would all join me, please, in standing for just a moment of silent reflection and prayer, and if you're a gentleman, if you'd remove your hats, please. Thank you very much. Our pledge tonight is going to be led by Ms. Sandy Greco, our Superintendent of Traffic Operations. Sandy, please.
Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Hart, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed and also approve the minutes of February tenth regular session.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding the agenda or the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
I move that we receive, place on file, and approve the consent agenda, items one A through B nine. Also with the approval of the consent agenda, I move that we make our bills payment, which will be read by our Finance Chair.
The bills this week are one million forty-three thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars and eighty cents, one comma zero four three comma seven nine zero point eight zero.
Second. Counsel, do you have comments on the consent agenda? Madam Clerk, please, it's a roll call vote.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes. I will mention tonight, ladies and gentlemen, that we have some new appointments to some of our boards and commissions, actually several. I'm not sure if anyone is here or not, but Cody Funk or Jason Verbraken or Terry Pearson Stevens, are any of you here tonight?
I'm required.
Stand, please. And I'm sorry, you're-
Jason Verbraken.
Jason, okay. And Jason is a new member of our Community Development Board. Jason, thank you for volunteering. It takes a lot of individuals for us to run our boards and commissions, and when people volunteer of their time and of their talents, we greatly appreciate it. We don't take that lightly. So, thank you for stepping up, and thank you for volunteering.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Cody Funk was appointed to our Design Review Board, and Terry Pearson Stevens to our Human Rights Commission. And we also had two reappointments of Mark Pregler and Andrea Delitt to our Human Rights Commission. So, to all of those people that step up and give of their time and of their talents to the city and volunteer on our boards and commissions, we greatly appreciate that, and thank you for that. Let's start with item number two, please. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Schmidt.
Item number two, I'd like to make the motion to receive and file proof of publication or notice of public hearing, and that's for the development agreement with Blackhawk Contracting and Development of Waterloo, Iowa, to authorize the sale and conveyance of a portion of city-owned property for one dollar located along Lafayette Street near its intersection with East Third Street for the construction of six townhouse dwellings.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Need another motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion then to reopen and hold the hearing continued from January thirteenth, two thousand fourteen.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries also, and the hearing from January thirteenth is now reconvened. And I have a couple of opening comments, if I could, please, before we get into audience comments. I did not do something at the last meeting that I should have, and I am remiss for that. And I want to make sure that everybody, particularly the church members, are aware that there was, I fear, some misguided emotions toward John Roof at the last meeting. The way this project got started was, Mr. Roof is doing some great things in our city. He's providing infill housing in places where we haven't had new housing for a very long time. So, he's doing some great work in our city. And he came to us last summer or last fall with a project that he wanted to do in our downtown area that was consisting of a number of brownstone-type apartments, condominiums, that would be market rate, and he wanted them downtown. And he was coming to us, asking us if we had a location, us being the city, primarily Noel Anderson, the Planning Director, and myself. We had several meetings about where would be a good place for this project to, to happen. And we settled on the lot at Third and Lafayette that we thought was underutilized and underused at the time. So, for, please do not anybody hold any ill will towards John Roof for this project. John did not pick that spot out and come to us. We picked the spot out and, and offered it to him. So, I just want, John's doing some great work in the city, and I don't want him to suffer any hard feelings over this at all, whether it's from the city or from the church members. It's, it's quote, "not his fault" that we are where we are with this issue today. So, I hope everybody understands that. And I should have done that last week, and I didn't. So, anyway, we are going to reopen the hearing. What I would like to do is take comments, further comments from the audience, but I would like, if I could, several of you spoke last week. Several of you that are here tonight, I see are new faces. So, if we can, if you spoke last week, let's let those that might not have gotten the opportunity to please come to the microphone. And we'll also have counsel have some comments. But if you did not speak last week, to start with, and you have comments regarding this issue, and you would like to make them, please come to the microphone, give us your name and address, and please try to limit your comments to three minutes. Yes, sir?
My name is David Dryer, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street, and I assume this is the property that is adjacent to the church that had an established value of seventy-two thousand dollars the last time I read it in the paper. I guess my question basically is why did Mr. Roof get to buy this for a dollar when the established value was seventy-two thousand dollars if the church would buy it? I see this, I've been here three years, four years, moved in from Parkersburg, and I see this constantly where, over the time that I've read the paper, that we keep giving away a dollar when the value is seventy-two thousand if you want to sell it to the church, a dollar for a piece of property that's worth seventy-two thousand. If it were your piece of property, would you sell it for a dollar?
David, thank you, and I'll answer that. That question comes up quite a bit. We don't sell any city property for a dollar without a development agreement. The development agreement is the key part of that. What we are trying to do is establish a tax base with that piece of property. If the church ends up buying that piece of property, and something else that I will add is the church has made an offer to buy that piece of property for the assessed value. That's different from the last time we had this meeting. But if the church buys it for the assessed value, they will give us that assessed value, and that will be the end of the income from that property. If Mr. Roof buys it and develops a whatever million-dollar project on there, that will start paying property taxes that will pay for as long as the property stays. If you have another comment, please come back to the microphone.
David Dryer, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. Again, I've seen this happen before, but at the same time, that property gets a tax abatement for five years, so it doesn't immediately start paying back to the city, give them a tax abatement, but at the same time, have him pay seventy-two thousand dollars for it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dryer. Yes, sir?
I'm Chris Woods, eleven oh five Mulberry Street. I'd like to speak briefly in support of this project. As a downtown resident, we need more quality housing downtown, and the plans for this, they look very attractive, they're within the style of the neighborhood. And if our downtown businesses are going to thrive, we need more people living downtown that can support those. Furthermore, on the tax issue, if you look at this in the long term, over fifty years, we're currently at, you know, approximately a million dollars worth of revenue, tax revenue, over, over the next fifty years. So, in the short term, sure, you could sell it for seventy-two thousand dollars versus a dollar, but you're not going to collect that tax revenue over the next fifty years. And it's really important to have a long-term view when we're talking about downtown and developing the city. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else?
Good evening. David Deeds, nine twenty-two Mulberry Street. I'm in here, here both as a downtown resident. I live a block and a half from where I stand today, as well as the Controller for JSA Development. I'm speaking for both, really, at this point. And what I would like to say, first of all, before anybody gets any ideas, we have no financial interest in this project. This does not benefit us in any sort of way, other than that it supports the overall development of downtown. Downtown needs owner-occupied market rate units. That's something that we lack at this point. We, at this time, have approximately thirty-three, soon to be slightly more than that, rental apartments. And we see very often those residents are leaving our apartments for other places around the community after a year or two, three years, depending because of the natural progression of their lifestyles. And what we really would like to see to help strengthen downtown is have that purchase option within walking distance of the core, Fourth Street corridor, in order to strengthen our efforts to strengthen the overall revitalization of downtown Waterloo, and to make this a better place, not only for ourselves, but for the church as well, I would imagine. As many are aware, this, there are, there is more than ample parking within half a block to a block of this particular site. We have a six-hundred-car parking garage, literally a block away from this particular church and this particular site. So, lack of parking certainly is not the issue from our perspective. And we think that the church can certainly be accommodated in its needs, closing off the street, for example, if there was temporarily for special events, should they need that. There are many, many ways to solve this, this problem beyond taking this good parcel that is available for redevelopment and building a for-sale market rate apartment, or, I'm sorry, homes in our downtown core. For too long, we've had too many surface parking lots sitting around our core and creating essentially dead zones. I know myself as a pedestrian and many other people that bike and walk about our downtown, parking lots are not inviting places to be, and it certainly don't create vitality in the core of our downtown. So, we would strongly encourage you to realize that there is plenty of parking options. Things can be worked out, certainly by action of the council, to address parking concerns. But please do let this project move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Deeds.
Forrest Dilavu, seventeen twenty-five Huntington Road. I need a question answered before I speak to this issue, and that is, is this or will this be in the downtown TIF area, or will it be in a TIF area of its own?
Yes. Right, no, go ahead.
Noel Anderson, County Planning and Development Director. This site is located within the Logan TIF district.
Oh, okay.
So, in answer to that, this being in a TIF district, even though it may pay taxes and undoubtedly will pay taxes, this will not help pay for the largest expense the taxpayers have in the city of Waterloo, that is, police and fire protection. That money will stay in downtown to buy more buildings downtown or to fund other things downtown. This will continue to burden the same people that are paying tax, the same number. You know, our residential properties do not increase in Waterloo, the residents do not increase. This just further, it's one more step where we don't get any money to help pay for the biggest expense we have in the city of Waterloo. Thank you.
Thanks, Forrest.
My name is Charles Orr. I've been a small developer in downtown for the past twenty-five years. My wife and I have lived at six sixteen Sycamore Street for the past twenty-plus years. I am presently on the Enterprise Zone Commission, and I do not speak on as a representative of them, but I do say to you that we were greatly surprised and very pleased when we saw this request come to us after it went through the process with the city, and the Enterprise Zone Commission unanimously approved this project. It has been, I believe, over fifty years since housing of single-family dwelling has been developed in downtown. We have a number of apartments in downtown, and that's great. Twenty-five years ago, when I came downtown, you could have parked semis on Fourth Street and Sycamore and Lafayette from one end to the other, and nobody would have complained. Today, we got a parking problem. You know, it's, at least in our heads, we do. I would greatly support the effort of Mr. Roof to develop this housing.
Thanks, Mr. Orr. If anyone has any comments, you're welcome to come to the microphone.
Andrea Walter, eight seven six Fowler. I'm a member of, thank you, Queen of Peace. And in regards to what that one fellow said about the progress of the uptown, which everyone is pleased with, with that progress, there's going to be more and more, and I just feel that it would be so right to have Queen of Peace have their own parking lot because who knows in the future that perhaps we will not be able to park on the streets or whatever. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea.
Jack Black, two twenty-seven Downing Avenue. I've spoken before, but I would just like to say, on this tax base, am I correct to understand that there's a five-year that he will not be paying taxes?
No.
What is the-
Noel, what is the arrangement for that?
Noel Anderson, County Planning and Development Director. The proposed development agreement would have ten years at fifty percent.
Okay. Ten years at fifty percent, Jack?
Ten years.
And as far as Forrest's comments, Noel, about the TIF, what percentage of the TIF, how does that, how does that work?
Obviously, the council, in any TIF district, the council has the ability to release funds from that TIF district into the general fund if we, if we have enough revenue being created in the TIF district over the amount of debt owed anytime. I hope I'm explaining that correctly, Michelle, but as long as we have enough to pay the bills in the TIF district, we can release money to the general fund if we wish to.
With that project, as far as the taxes, Jack, would pay fifty percent of the taxes for ten years.
Okay. Say, say now, if he would keep that for three years and then sells it to somebody else, do they get the same agreement?
I think so, yes, yes. Noel's nodding his head, so I'll say yes.
Okay. And one other thing I have to say in regards to the parking ramp, that's true, you got a parking ramp in Park Avenue. Okay, most of our congregation are senior citizens, and especially this winter, that you would want to have people parking down there that use canes and whatever else and walk two, or a block and a half or two blocks in this, well, good luck to you.
Yeah. And we, and we appreciate that, Jack. And let me, maybe today, now is just a good time for me to insert another comment, that we have had much conversation amongst us about this project, and I don't have any idea, quite honestly, how the council is going to vote tonight. Should they approve the project, the last thing that we want to do is affect the church in any negative way at all. We're proud that it's there. It's a great congregation, it's a family, it's, it's just a, it's a great institution in our downtown. The city will work with the church any way we possibly can to provide enough parking that you will never be in need of parking, whether that's barricading the streets for events. Obviously, we don't write tickets on Sundays, anyway, but if you have an event, a funeral or a wedding or whatever down there, and you contact the city clerk's office in advance, we will ensure you that you will not get tickets. We want to work with you to try to develop a way so that you always have enough parking for the church. While it may not be that parking lot, again, I don't know how the council's going to vote. If, if that's the way they vote, we will provide parking.
May I have one other, other thing, Mayor?
Sure, Jack.
Would it be considered by the city, we have, we have parking meters on the north and east side of our church, would it, would they consider of taking those out of there? That would help a lot.
If council votes to approve tonight, we'll have that conversation, and that would be my recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just end with, that kind of a decision will inevitably be a council decision. It would be my recommendation that we do that.
All right, thank you.
John Sherman, seventeen fifteen Robin Road. I just have one question. Has any of the TIF money ever been released for, and put back into the general fund?
Not since I've been mayor, John, but I don't know prior to that.
Well, actually, Michelle Whedon, our Chief Financial Officer, for the northeast site, for a number of years, we had been releasing some value back to the general fund. The Logan TIF is actually relatively new and has not had a lot of projects, so it's not actually generating a huge amount of revenue yet. So, we have not been able to release it from Logan.
Would you have any idea how much money that would be?
For Logan?
No, for the northeast side or whichever one was released?
Um, well, it's kind of interesting. The way that the county works that is I know how much revenue I asked for, and they don't really come back to you with a report of how much was released. I can do some research to try to figure out the valuation, but I don't have that amount.
Okay, well, I can probably guess. It's not a whole lot. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Craig White, fifteen sixty-three Oakwood Drive, Parish Council Chairperson. Mr. Mayor, we're talking about eight hundred and thirty-three families that you're affecting, and we're talking, how many condos? Six? Four?
I don't know. I think it's six, Craig.
Okay, four. And a hundred and- Four, and 100 and some years, and we're doing all that renovation, trying to make it a better church, and all we're getting done to us is put on the back burner, really. I've heard some real good comments tonight about the situations and keep an open mind.
Thanks, Craig. Council, comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr., I'm sorry, one more, I'm sorry, I thought we were done.
William Schmidt, 102 Elkhorn Street out in Elkhorn Heights. I was here at the last meeting we had regarding this issue, and there were very many comments that were made praising this project. So, you know, I don't think that any of us are opposed to progress, and everybody was in favor of improvement of the downtown area and of what Mr. Ruff was doing. Also, I find it very hard to believe that this is the only site available in all of downtown Waterloo, Iowa. And that's what we were trying to make the comment or the message of, we search out other sites that would serve his purpose as well as ours. Secondly, they keep saying that we have ample parking. Yes, we have the use of the Elks parking lot right across the street. However, priority number one is the Elks Club. When they have any event, whether it be a wedding or any other activity, then we're not allowed to park there, and that's the way it should be. Another comment that was made last time was that, oh, it doesn't look like there's many people who park in that lot. Well, it's pretty hard to park in a lot that hasn't been plowed. I wouldn't want to get stuck, I've been parking back there, but it's been a little bit of a, I have to convince my wife that I'll make sure she can get through the snow. So anyhow, those are the comments I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Is there anyone else from the audience? Mr. Morrissey? I'm sorry. Come to the microphone, please, Dave.
David Dreyer, 3145 West Fourth. Has it ever been considered that maybe they split it? Instead of having Mr. Ruff take over the whole lot, that they leave some parking for Queen of Peace Church? And he, again, spends X amount of money for the rest of it rather than just a dollar?
Noel, was that ever discussed?
We did look at that. I mean, it's only a 50-stall parking lot to begin with, there's not a real good way to split that up and have the sufficient room for the units and maintain more than one row of parking, so it didn't make a whole lot of sense to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I guess that's in the mind of the beholders rather than the mind of the church.
Thanks, Dave. Okay, Mr. Morrissey.
Mr. Mayor, this issue has been out there for some time now, and to me, the lot there, the property there, it's city-owned property, and it has been since 1952 when it was purchased by the city from a private individual. So, right now, that is the property of all of the citizens of Waterloo, Iowa. And my understanding is that the property has virtually brought in no revenue to the citizens in over 61 years, other than been associated with some costs with clearing it and putting up meters and taking them down and then putting up leased parking, and virtually no revenue, even though there were meters in there and there were leased parking stalls that went unleased. And should this property be sold to a tax-exempt entity, again, although there'll be that immediate infusion of 70-some thousand dollars, there'll be no continuing revenue back to all of the citizens of Waterloo. This area of inner Waterloo is and has been looking for revitalization, has been part of revitalization and a commitment to that for years. Selling this property to a private entity or developer for a dollar, what does that mean? First of all, it means property taxes that result in 7,500 to $1,000 annually in taxes the first 10 years, and then 15 to 18,000 annually after the abatement, the TIF ends, and the TIF, as Noel had said, is at 50 percent now. Secondly, the neighborhood is improved, it's architectural design that's aligned with that area. Third, it's consistent with the city's goal, again, of revitalization and putting a refreshing look down in an area which other people might consider blighted but needs to be improved. That's one of the things that I ran on as a city, to be on the city council, is to revitalize the parts of Waterloo that have been overlooked. And granted, this area is just outside Ward Three, but it still is part of Waterloo and is part of Quentin's area, and I look to Quentin for some leadership here. Next, the project is environmentally and aesthetically sound, appealing to those interested in their downtown living. Next, the properties are selling for, I believe, around $150,000, and I, my understanding was that three of them already are spoken for. And this raises the values of other properties in the area and the promise of more improvement in the neighborhood. Plus, it's going to bring more people down there that are going to be looking at the area. This benefits not just that area, but the city overall. Lastly, this increases our revenue base, our overall revenue base. I believe that arrangements can be made, as Mayor Clark has spoken about removing meters and street blockage on special occasions or events. In short, my decision in favor of this project is based on what's best for all of Waterloo, while at the same time being mindful of what the church needs for events and services. I see the development of the property as in the best interest of all the citizens of Waterloo.
Thank you, Mr. Morrissey. I might ask, one of the gentlemen that spoke spoke of other opportunities downtown. Mr. Schmidt, I know you had a tour, would you like to speak to that at all?
I was planning on, but I was going to defer to Quentin first, if he had any comments in his word.
Was he a former council person?
I don't know, I'd like to know who wrote that, though. That was pretty impressive, I liked that, yeah.
No, I'm processing.
Okay, well, I guess a couple of things. I know the whole council is in favor of economic development, and especially in downtown Waterloo, and we've got new housing going up and housing being rehabilitated in downtown Waterloo, and we're all very supportive of that. But I do think, on the tour that Councilman Lind and Mr. Anderson and I took, there are other areas in that part of town that could be developed. There might be some remnants of houses sitting on those lots today that we'd have to deal with. But the reality of it is, I think for Queen of Peace Church, there are not a lot of other opportunities for parking. If there was a way that they could guarantee or get a guarantee from the Elks that they could have that parking lot, I don't think this would be that big of an issue for them, but that apparently is not an option. And, you know, the Historic Preservation Group was just in the paper here a few months ago, sharing their dismay that the old Expo School, I think prior to that it was Hawthorne, was being demolished, and that, you know, we weren't far sighted enough in looking down the road to save a property like that. And I think we've got exactly the same thing going on here. The short-sighted, short-term, easy answer to this is to build some housing there. But once that parking lot's gone, if something develops with that Elks parking lot, Queen of Peace Church, which is the only Catholic church on the east side of the river, it's the Hispanic church for the Hispanic Catholics in Waterloo, and as we all know, that's a growing population, that's our church. And I just think it's being real short-sighted to say this is the only place that this can be built. And I guess I'm confident that should we turn this down, should the church pay assessed value for it, which is in align with our expectations of the council, that Mr. Ruff would find some other locations and some other lots to build his housing, which I would absolutely support. So, yeah, for that reason, and I also believe I've heard some comments about the waterworks, our city waterworks having an interest in having this parking lot for utilization also. So I think there's, you know, several different reasons that we should vote this item down and then accept the offer from the church to sell the parking lot to them.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Other council members, good comments. Anyone else to speak at all? Mr. Orr.
I would simply remind the council that in the last 20 years since I've moved my residency to downtown Waterloo, the taxes on my building have gone from $1,700 a year to almost $10,000 a year. To deny further tax revenue in the downtown area, you know, it's not being responsible either.
Thanks, Mr. Orr. Okay, yes, Mr. Orr.
Just real quickly, I've been on council six years, and this is probably one of the toughest decisions that I remember being faced with, because I remember sitting with Mr. Deeds some five, six years ago, talking about ways to improve downtown with decorative lights and taking an interest in areas that haven't seen development in a while, to talking to Noel and community development to see what we can do to spur opportunity and opportunities for our downtown area and northeast side as well. But I'm perplexed, because I think in Mr. Schmidt's comments, he talked about value and the value that the church has brought to the downtown community, and you can't necessarily put a price on that all the time when you take a look at the many people that have invested their lives into going to the church, providing and trying to be good neighbors. So, like I said, I'm absolutely torn by this decision, and I'm also torn that we weren't able to find out if we can talk to the Elks Club or a couple of other areas to try to make arrangements so that we can ensure that the church does have adequate parking as well. But Mr. Morrissey talked about leadership, but today, I think I'm going to, at this moment, when we vote, vote on the side of the church and the people downtown and them actually purchasing that property from the city.
Further council comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Welper?
You and I have talked about this numerous times, and this may shock you.
I'm rarely shocked anymore.
I have been completely in support of the church on this, you know, from the onset, because money isn't everything.
Right.
And I certainly appreciate them having the need for parking. Our conversation earlier today in regards to possibly working with the Elks, I would like to think that that could still happen. So I'd hate to pass up this opportunity of adding to our tax base by selling to a lot that wouldn't generate any more money. I would, so I'm going to support the project and work as hard as I possibly can to make sure that this church does end up with parking in that area, some way, one way or another.
And what, the conversation that Ron's talking about is, I had a conversation earlier today, Ron asked me to look into something with the Elks Club. I found out who the attorney was for the Elks Club, I approached the attorney, he could not obviously speak for the membership, but is willing to go back to the membership for some kind of a decision on that. That's a kind of a lengthy process. It's kind of like going through council, takes a while to go back to the Elks Board and to get all of the people, and there's no assurance whatsoever, but he is willing to do that, and that is an option that we can certainly take a look at. Anyone else?
Just one other comment, I would like to remind the council that there are several other historic, or in my mind, historic churches in downtown Waterloo, one of which is, I believe, for sale, another one that I believe is struggling, and again, some of that, I think, has to do with the fact that it is a downtown church. I think this downtown church, which I believe is 110 or 115 years old, because it's the only Catholic church on the east side of the river, and also because of the influx of Hispanic folks that we've had, I believe is a blaspheming church. And I mean, I think the worst thing we could do would be to take parking away from this facility. And again, I think the night that Mr. Ruff was here, and I don't know if Mr. Johnson wants to talk about this or not, but the night that Mr. Ruff was here, I think a comment was made that, well, if I don't build it here, I'll build it someplace else in that neighborhood or someplace else in downtown Waterloo. So, I don't see that voting against this is not the end of the world for Black Hawk Contracting and not the end of the world for building these six condos, because I believe they'll be built someplace else. Once this parking lot is gone from this church, it will no longer be available.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Well, I don't see this as being an issue about the church, I see this as being an issue about what's best for Waterloo and all of the citizens of Waterloo. And being a person who was born in Waterloo over 65 years ago and went to Sacred Heart, and I know the Sacred Heart is one of five churches in an area that is landlocked and basically has hardly any parking over there. And Sacred Heart Church is a great church, Trinity Lutheran is a great church, First Congregational is a good church, and they don't have all the parking in the world, but they make do. And I don't want to turn this into a we versus they thing, I think it's what's best for Waterloo. And it surprises me to hear any council person talk about issues relative to what our budget is going to be, and then decline to take advantage of increasing our tax base. That, to me, seems totally illogical and inconsistent.
Thank you, Mr. Morrissey. I'm going to call for a vote unless there's further comments. Madam Clerk, please, it's a roll call vote. Well, I'm sorry, let's close the hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments, and I believe, I believe we had some written comments also.
There are some written comments, yes.
Correct, yes, sir.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, that motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move then to adopt a resolution authorizing said sale and conveyance and authorize city attorney to prepare and deliver deed accordingly.
Second.
Madam Clerk, that is a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lind?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
No.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, the vote passes four to three in favor of authorizing the sale to Mr. Ruff.
Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving said development agreement, authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
And that also is a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lind?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
No.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good, that vote also passes. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, all, and I do want you to take to heart my pledge to you that I will work with you on parking as much as I can now.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Hart? Move to adopt a resolution approving agreement with Silver Eagle Harley-Davidson, well, to lease two 2010 Harley-Davidson motorcycles at a cost of $135 per month, per motorcycle for one year, plus routine maintenance, and authorize mayor to execute said document. Number four, I move to adopt a resolution approving certificate of title as required by the FAA in order to continue with the grant process and authorize mayor to execute said document. And five, I move to adopt a resolution approving agreement for traffic safety improvement funding with Iowa Department of Transportation in the amount of $47,000 for improving traffic signal installations and replacing signs at the intersection of Downing and Amesboro Avenues, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Very good. Council, do you have any comments regarding three, four, or five? Roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good, the motions carry. Next three, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hart? Move to adopt a resolution approving award of contract to Aspro Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of $1,957,171.65, and approving contract bonds and certificate of insurance for the FY 2014 Aspro Overlay Program Contract, number 857, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. In seven, I move to adopt a resolution approving award of contract to Hawkeye Environmental of Soulan, Iowa in the amount of $10,580, and approving the contract bonds and certificates of insurance for the asbestos survey services for 1423 Hawthorne Avenue, 223 Independence Avenue, 927 Mullen Avenue, 421 Almond Street, 425 Almond Street, 928 Mulberry Street, 408 Saxon Street, 420 Dawson Street, 426 Cherry Street, 134 Dearborn Avenue, 717 Vinton Street, 67 Franklin Street, 520 Cottet Street, 120 Smith Street, 820 Fowler Street, 1013 Lincoln Avenue, 237 Independence Avenue, 4012 Levercy Road and 210 Clay Street and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number eight, I move to adopt a resolution approving request by Midwest Development for the 102 lot preliminary plat of Audubon Heights Fourth Edition generally located north of West Shawless Road and east of Hoff Road for a new residential subdivision on 50.97 acres.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Mr. Welper, comments from counsel regarding six, seven, or eight?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Just a comment on six.
Yes.
We only received one bid, once again.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's your comment?
That's my comment.
Very good. Roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please. Well stated.
Short.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Um, no on six, yes on seven and eight.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Very good, the motions carry. Let's do the last four, please. Nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. Ms. Cole.
I move we adopt a resolution approving request by Craig Fairbanks Homes for the preliminary plat of Crossroads Estates, replat number five, generally located along Hummingbird Circle between Bobalink Drive and Sarah Drive for the development of a five-lot residential subdivision on 1.9 acres. Ten is a resolution approving a lactation-accommodation policy. Eleven is a resolution approving the amended FY 2013 Cooperative Agreement between the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and the City of Waterloo for the Fair Housing Assistance Program with an increased funding from $18,350 to $138,350. Twelve is a resolution approving a recommendation of award of contract to Lehman Trucking and Excavating of Waterloo in the amount of $33,270 in conjunction with a demo and site clearance services for 210 Clay, 211 Cortland, 223 Independence Avenue and 120 Smith Street and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Cole. Mr. Hart, are there comments, counsel, regarding nine, ten, eleven, and twelve? Madam Clerk, there are roll call votes, please.
I do have a question.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. The lactation accommodation policy, is this going to cost us any money or do we have a space to?
No, it just says that we will try to accommodate. If there's not one available, we'll try to find the closest one available.
Because it could end up costing us money if we have to build.
No. No, it just says that we will try to find and try to accommodate, whether it be an empty office or what we can do.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Item number 13, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number 13 is a motion received, filed, considered, and passed for the second time and ordinance repealing Chapter Seven Housing of Title IX Building Regulations and enacting in lieu thereof a new Chapter Seven Rental Housing of Title IX Building Regulations and that's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo by repealing Chapter Seven Housing of Title IX Building Regulations of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo and enacting in lieu thereof a new Chapter Seven Rental Housing of Title IX Building Regulations of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo.
Second. Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor, are we not going to allow folks to speak tonight because I think there's some folks here that did want to speak.
I'd be glad to let people speak. Let's, let's do that before the next motion and be glad to, Mr. Schmidt.
And I would vote yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Very good, that motion carries. If there is anyone, this is the landlord rental program that we introduced last week that got tabled, not tabled, I'm sorry, we read the first time. Anybody want to speak regarding that, the landlord ordinance?
Marty Stokes, 1419 West Fourth Street. Mr. Mayor, council members, I appreciate your allowing comments. As I stated before and I'd like to reiterate, I do stand in favor of the ordinance itself and I believe that we as property investors and the city have the same goals in mind when it comes to this ordinance. However, I have pause when it comes to the fees that have been suggested to enact and implement the program. My question is, is it really going to cost five times more than what we're paying right now for the ordinance that we already have in place? If you think about it, what other fees or who, what other program have we ever implemented where we're asking for a five-fold increase in fees? If we had a five-fold increase in golf fees or building permits or any other fees that the city institutes, I think we'd have outcry. And short of outcry, I would like to express my concern at what has been suggested for our fees. No clear budget has really been proposed. There is a lot that seems to be left in the air at this point. And rather than jumping in at 500%, I again would reiterate and suggest that rather than $25 per year per rental unit in our city, that we would adopt a $10 fee per year per unit, which would still be a doubling of what we as property investors are paying. I'm the president of Martin Realtors. We're a property management firm. We manage property for some 75 owners. And so, because of that, we see the financials for all of these owners each, each month in, month in, month out. And I can tell you that there's not a lot of margin for our property investors. So, I believe that enacting a $25 per unit per year fee is going to create a hardship for many owners of investment property. And so I would encourage you when it comes time to adopt the resolution enacting the fees for this ordinance, that you would please act from a, from the conservative side. And if fees need to be adjusted at some point in the future when we have a better idea of what this program is really going to cost, that can be addressed at that point. I'd also like to remind the council that it was suggested last time that if the fee, the $25 fee was not approved, that the taxpayers would have to make up the difference. First of all, I'd like to remind you that myself as a property owner, I am already a taxpayer and that we really don't know what the cost of this program is going to be yet. Thank you.
Thanks, Marty. Craig, could you maybe just address that again, how you arrived at the $25 fee and what it's going to cover, et cetera, please?
Craig Clark, building official. How the $25 fee came about is we took two full-time staff plus vehicles, cost of doing business, and came up with a number. That $25 fee probably does not cover all our costs, but I think it is probably very close. I, I personally do not get paid anything out of this budget. Mine comes from the building inspection department. So, anytime I do any work towards this, it would, is not covered or the city attorney or numbers of things, but that's how the number came about.
Okay, is the statement that we're just paying more for the same services, is that a factual statement? Is that correct? Or is there more to this program now than there was?
There is more to the program, one thing being we are going from a five-year inspection to a three-year. And I guess my comment last time about taxpayers paying for it, that's who's paying for it now. Right now, we collect $40,000 in revenue and our costs are 160. Somebody pays for that. So, I mean, that's where we came up with these numbers.
Okay.
And just one note, too. The last time we changed the fees was 1994. The cost of gas was $1.11. The average cars, cost of a car was 12,384.
Makes us all sound old, Craig.
Just for clarification, too, the fees are a separate item that'll be voted on after the ordinance, just so that everybody's clear that voting on the ordinance is not the fees. The fees are the very last item under that.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mayor. Forrest Delu, 1725 Huntington Road. I, too, am opposed to the fees. I think they're quite out too much. And it's a known fact that if you give money to a department, they have to spend it all and they will spend it all, whether it be new cars, new trucks, wage increases, more manpower, whatever, it'll get spent and there, there won't be any savings there for the taxpayers. And another issue I would like to address is the night, the insurance requiring that I show insurance, if requested, that I can repair this house, should it burn, tornado hit it or whatever, in 90 days. I would like to challenge that 90 days. I have a house across the street from me that had a minor fire, I call a minor fire, in the attic, smoke damage and the types of things you'd expect. It has been 60 days, Your Honor, and to this day, they're not done. They have barely begun to work. They have been there twice. The cleanup people, the residents have moved out and moved to Texas. I don't know if they're ever coming back. But, and there's more to that issue, but I won't bring those up. But I think 90 days is unreal. I don't know why it's there. I don't know why the insurance is there. If we need this on rental houses, we should need it on every house in Waterloo. If you're concerned that if it gets burnt that it can't get fixed, or if it gets a tornado, it can't get fixed, leave it set. Why is there such a need to fee and get after landlords? Has somebody, some landlord come to you and made you mad? I mean, I try not to. But please, treat us like the rest of the city. Don't, don't single us out to fee us and charge us and, and Mr. Chalka has, has come up with an ordinance that can charge me for what my tenants do. What have we done? Thank you.
Thanks, Forrest. Is there anyone else?
You can only speak once.
Thank you for indulging me.
Quickly, if you would.
Marty Stokes, 1419 West Fourth Street. Just in regard to the fees, and I didn't know that we would have a chance to address, speaking about fees, I know it's a separate issue than the ordinance. But the whole idea behind creating this ordinance, as I understand it, was to help bring in line landlords or property investors who either hadn't registered their properties, their properties had not been inspected, or that they in some other ways were not conforming to the code that was already in place, thus giving the city a better way to control landlords that were, were not in compliance already. As a landlord, and you've been addressed by other property investors here, who are the ones who are in compliance, who are already expending extra finances to make sure that we comply with what the city wants so that our city is a good place to live, that we have good, affordable, clean and decent housing for, for people that need it. So, again, it's my position that I don't think that the cost of this program should be shouldered on the ones who are already doing a good job. We should make it painful, perhaps, for the ones who are not in compliance. And I would further suggest that if we would like to extract extra fees from property owners, that it would be from the property owners who are not in compliance. We're already spending plenty of our finances to make sure that we're in compliance and that we're providing good housing. Let's make it hurt for the ones who aren't. And if we want to extract fees and, and pay for this program over and above, you know, if it's five times the program we have now, I don't, I don't see that it is five times the program that we have now. But I think that we should extract fees from the ones who are not in compliance already.
Thanks, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you.
Counsel, do you have comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I agree with Forrest that the 90 days may not be adequate time. And I interpreted that as, you know, we want to see some movement on it and I'm sure the city would work with any landowner that was trying to fix or improve and is not really holding their feet to the, I guess, fire on that one, right, to get that, get that fixed.
No pun intended, I'm sure.
No, no, none at all. It was accidental. So, I believe that's true. Is anybody, can anyone speak to that or not speak to that?
Craig.
Craig Clark, building official. That is exactly right. You know, we had to come up with a number. We talked about 60 to 120 sometime in that timeframe. I think the, what we're looking for is the, I mean, obviously, if they're going to remodel, they're going to have to get permits, they're going to have to go through insurance companies. That's a long process. We understand that and we'll work with them on those. I think some of the other ones were ones that maybe just need to be demoed and we didn't want to have that long a timeframe for those situations where the house is completely destroyed and we want some action done to get it either demoed or taken care of, so.
I think you remember a couple of those instances last year, Dave, where we dealt with that.
Yes, I do, yeah.
Like the one on Willow, Willow Street that set burned down and children. It was a hazard and nothing had happened for a long time.
Further comments? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
I don't have the motion to suspend.
I'm sorry.
Do you mean make a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lind?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Okay, the motion fails. We will take this up next week. Let's go to item number 14, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Cole.
I move we receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance amending the 2007 Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo by amending Section Six of Chapter Two, nuisances of Title Four Public Health and Safety and by amending Sections Two, Three, Five, Six, Eight, and Ten of Chapter Three, solid waste collection and disposal of Title Four Public Health and Safety of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo.
Second. Questions on this comment, comments, counsel? Is that a roll call vote? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good, thank you, counsel. Motion carries.
I move we suspend the rules.
Second. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lind?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Motion fails. We'll talk about this next week also. Item 15, please.
Mr. Hart. Move to approve change order number one for a net increase of $1,880 for work performed by KW Electric of Cedar Falls, Iowa for FY 2014 Danes Complex Lighting and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and all of you in the audience tonight also. A lot of very important topics tonight, but that is the end of our regularly scheduled business. It's time for oral presentations. If there's anyone in the audience that has anything further to say to mayor or council, now is the time to do so. Please address the microphone, give us your name and address.
Yeah, Jack Black, 227 Downing. I just want to thank the mayor and the council for taking this into consideration of our project and there was a good discussion on it tonight. Thank you very much.
Jack, and I know Craig was a little upset. Let's work together to make sure that the church has adequate parking.
Sure.
We will do that and we will, we will provide parking for the church. We don't want anything bad to happen.
We take into consideration the parking meters.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Appreciate it very much.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
David Dryer, 3145 West Fourth. I'm new to this game, I guess, but need some answers that I'm not getting elsewhere. Why do we vote to void three readings? Been somewhat involved with other councils and they always do three readings.
Well, we didn't tonight, Dave, and two different times, the council voted to not suspend the rules.
Agreed, but I see this. Agreed, but I see this on several different items from last week and this week. Why do we do that? If it says there's supposed to be three readings, there's supposed to be three readings.
Up to the council's discretion, and a lot of the items are so incredibly routine, and some of them are time-sensitive, they need to happen prior to that.
Agreed.
So that would be the reason.
Okay, suspend the rules. What does that mean? What rules?
I don't know, what's the meaning?
The rule is that an ordinance needs to be read three times unless council suspends that rule and passes it all in one night, and so it's suspending that rule so that they can pass it in one night.
Again, the suspension, which, again, I would say doesn't allow more people to understand what's going on, to come and address the council. Combining unrelated items. I see a lot of different things from last weekend, this week, where there's something about asphalt, and then there's something about building ordinance, and there's something about something else. You combined...
I combined the resolutions.
Nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. Nine is a resolution for a home plot, ten was a lactation thing, eleven was approving the cooperative agreement between the U.S. Department of, none of that has relation to me. A resolution approving award of contract to Lehman Trucking and Excavation for $33,000 in conjunction demolition site clearance.
Mr. Jones?
None of those, to me, have a relationship together.
Right, David.
So why aren't they taken individually?
They are taken individually for comment, for as long as I've been involved with the council, which has been...
Not here.
13, 14 years now, they have, resolutions have been read together, and then asked for comments individually, so on any of those individual items, council can comment on. The audience can comment on if they like.
Okay.
Generally speaking, we don't do comments on resolutions, but it's just past practice, it's a way we've done it for a very long time.
Okay.
And I guess I don't see an issue with that, as long as they're articulated individually and given the opportunity to speak.
But they aren't to the audience.
Okay, that's a point well taken.
Where to find, what items are coming up?
I'm sorry?
Where to find what items are coming up, because I've been at two council meetings now, and I read the agenda, and I have no idea what a lot of these ordinances are, et cetera, so how do I find out where?
Everything goes through the city clerk's office, so all of the items that are on the agenda will be on file in the city clerk's office, they're all discussed here Thursday, well, physically, it's not going to be here now for a while, but they're all discussed at an agenda meeting, Thursday mornings at 8:30. Every Thursday morning, we have a meeting that discusses the agenda, the agenda is public after that, and the courier does a pretty good job at...
Where do I find that public?
You're going to comment on that.
On our announcement.
On the website. The website posts the agenda, the agenda's posted on the website by Friday for the Monday meeting, and there's a cover sheet that every department head submits based on any item, so if you have any questions, you're certainly more than welcome to call my office, and we can email you that cover sheet that gives an explanation on any given item.
Friday for a Monday meeting, that's a short notice, thank you.
That's law.
The law's 24 hours, so we're complying.
Cheryl Christiansen, 1702 East Mitchell. I have something for all of you to consider, and that is, in the future, the housing, in case we were to have a situation like we did in the 80s, where we have high unemployment, and we have a new complex that's being built down there where the hotel was on Mullen and Jefferson Street, and you're taking parking places from away, from the church that couldn't be used by the members there. The other thing is, is that the meters in the area, how much did it cost to put all these digital meters in?
I don't know, Cheryl, those were bought several years ago.
See other meters. And why don't we have a parking space that is free, like they do in Cedar Falls, where you can have a place that's close to downtown, and it's free of meters?
That's been discussed many, many times, and it's always fallen back to where we're going to have parking meters.
Okay, and one other question on the housing that's being built, I understand that John Ruff is getting a mowing situation done on the properties for X number of years, and the rest of us have to mow our own yards, so I don't know why the individual property owners...
I'm not sure what you're speaking of there.
Well, each one of these housing units that are being put up on the school districts...
Oh, he's responsible for those, Cheryl.
He's responsible?
As soon as we give him that property, as soon as he takes ownership, he's responsible for that, he doesn't get a deal on that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay? Thank you. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Hart?
Motion to receive and file oral comments and adjourn.
Second. Before we adjourn, I have two comments myself, please, if I could. Waterloo, as well as many other cities in the area, are experiencing a tremendous number of incidences of frozen service lines, water service lines, from the main to your house. I spoke to the waterworks last week, we've had something in excess of 500 frozen service lines from the water main to your house. We've given many notices out about this, there's been a story in the paper, all kinds of things, but we're having an incredibly unusual year, people's service lines are freezing, and the only way you're going to prevent that is to leave a stream of water running. The waterworks manager recommends that you take the temperature of your water, if it's 40 degrees or below, you need to start leaving a stream of water running in your house. It's going to be much cheaper to do that than try to untie your frozen pipe, and there's really nothing that the city can do to help you with that. We don't have the facilities, and the responsibility of the service line is the property owner, if I'm correct, Dennis, and that, so please, take the precautions to test your temperature in your water and leave that water run. The second thing, which has been spoken a couple of times tonight, tonight is going to be our last meeting night at this location, so if, for those of you that routinely come to our Waterloo City Council meetings, starting next week, they will be at the Center for the Arts in the little theater portion of the Center for the Arts, so thank you for your diligence in coming, and we hope to see you there next week. There's been a motion and a second for adjournment, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.